Calling to our Benton City Council Meeting. August ninth, two thousand twenty five. We'll start with the Pledge of Alleges and Jeannie, your duty list.
A flagrant two oh five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God in the face of all.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeannie. We have a roll call, please.
Councilwoman Wadsworth, Councilman Sandretto, Councilman Reed, Councilwoman Alczar, Councilman Stevenson.
Here.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Are there any questions on it or items of concern?
Moved it through the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, I.
Stevenson, I.
Reed, I.
Alczar, I.
The motion passes. Okay, any comments on the agenda is presented?
Hearing none. Move to approve the consent agenda?
The agenda.
Or I'm sorry, the agenda?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, I.
Wadsworth, I.
Stevenson, I. Reed, I.
Alczar, I.
Okay, visitors' comments for any non-agenda item. Are there any visitors wanting to make comments on a non-agenda item?
The comment is, is the parking and bike lane.
That's an agenda item.
It's not an agenda item. I don't want to confirm that. Thank you.
There's an agenda item. Okay, hearing, no one wanting to make comments. We'll continue on to staff reports. Code enforcement is handed out. Business licenses and inspection reports are in the packets. I don't know. Did you want to make any comments on that? Not really. Okay.
Is that inspection report, does that include permits and everything or?
No, what?
The inspection report, does it include permits and everything?
Yes.
It's all.
Okay.
It's all in.
That's why I was asking. It was pretty lengthy.
Yeah, it's a good lot of response. We're pretty busy.
Okay.
Any questions on it?
None.
Public Works, did you want to make any comments on Public Works?
Yes.
Just want to touch on a few things on our public works, what we've got going on. First thing under the staff report is in your packet, but under T-Mobile Hometown Grant for the Riverfront Park Road and signage. We did receive notification on that one that we were not approved for that grant. It's a quarterly grant, so we will continue to submit. It's very competitive. It's a fifty thousand dollar grant max nationwide. So it's pretty competitive, but we've already built the package, so we'll continue to resubmit that and keep your fingers crossed, knock on wood. Also, the Public Works Board for Sewer Line Repairs, application was submitted on August eighth. And that's for repairing the sewer lines in the residential areas. The sidewalks on Ninth Street application was also submitted on August fifteenth. And I'd like to give a thank you to BF Cog, Port of Ben and County Fire District for letters of support for that. So we're confident that one's going to move forward. Wayfinding signage, the signs are ordered. We should be getting a sample sign within the next week or so to look at, and we're looking at installation on that for mid-September. And then on the splash pad, the project was approved and surveying has been completed and we're working on design with Akana right now on that, so. Any questions, comments?
No, thank you.
Lift station five.
Yes.
Is it going all right?
It's going fine. Yeah, de-watering has been an issue. Well, I can't say an issue. They hit groundwater where they thought, but thanks to Mr. Small, allowing us to de-water over to his property, it's, it's worked out all right, so. No major hangups. We're waiting on the lift station. It should be here on the twenty fifth, so that's what we're planning on install.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you. Lieutenant Clark.
Good evening. How are you guys?
Good.
Good.
How are you?
Good. So for July's report, we didn't have anything of significance and most of the crimes throughout July were isolated to incidents. No real trends or anything like that. We've continued to see the same as the last previous months, a little bit of a decline when you compare it to last year's report for the same months. Probably the only thing in it is not on here because it actually occurred in August when I spoke to you about the device that was found down there. And it turned out it was probably just a modified firework versus a pipe bomb. And so Bomb Squad came out, took care of that, but it didn't amount to anything major, so. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council meeting reports, council member reports.
I attended Ben Franklin Transit Board of Directors Meeting. We approved the five-year transportation plan and other than that, nothing of significance.
I have nothing at this time.
I have nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time.
I attended the Kionna Irrigation District Meeting. No, this is July sixteenth. They, not much is going on. There was a power outage though, and that's why the electric had gone out. And they said, that makes sure people understand that sometimes if there's a power outage in the area, that could affect the pumps, and that's what happened. And so then they have to, once the electric comes back on, they have to go down and restart the pumps. And it takes a little bit of time for it to re-pressurize the system. The flow meter system was put in and that's going well. The meeting is normally, would have been normally tomorrow night, but it's had to be rescheduled, so in case anyone was interested in going. That will be the twenty-seventh on Wednesday next week at the library at seven P M.
Thank you. Cheryl, I didn't ask you ahead of time, but I did go to a little bit of your chamber meetings. Would you like to make comments on your planning for September days, if you could?
This is the forty-first year Benton City Days, which woo-hoo, because it's awesome to have something that continues in our community for that long. We'll continue with our Benton Kitty Days this year. We've got a bunch of splash pad or splashback, bounce houses and water slides coming out. We do have a mechanical bull this year, so I'd love to see everybody out. And we tried it out this weekend and I didn't realize I had that many muscles in my stomach, so bull riding is not for me. We've got for our Latino night, I wish everybody would come out for that. We've got a mariachi band. We've got Kennewick High School. Their folkloric ballet dancers are coming out. We've got some little kid performers that are going to be singing. The bull will also be there if anyone wants to do it. We've got a ton of vendors, a ton of different food trucks this year. It's just going to be another fun event. We did get a cool sponsorship with Stevens Media Group. So any of our members that sign up again with us next year gets seven hundred dollars in free radio ad. Any new member gets a thousand dollars, which is a great way to get your, your name out there and what your business is doing. Sorry, I have no voice. The chamber's been working me to death and I love it. Which is, I mean Benton City Days, you come out to that. Our parade is getting bigger every year. Little Miss Benton City this year is Candyland themed and they've been working really hard on their dances. It's just going to be another fun event, so come out. I'll see all of you.
Thanks for the memories.
Yeah, if I don't hear you, I know where you live.
Here's your chance to ask for volunteers to take names.
Oh yeah, who wants to monitor the bounce houses? Not me. No, I mean, we are always looking for volunteers there, whether it be for Benton City Days. We're, we've been doing a lot of networking events, which has been great. We got a magician to come out this year, so that's going to be fun. We're always looking for volunteers and it's a community event and it does take a community to put it together. Because if not, this is what happens to my voice. I've been on the phone so much, I hate the sound of my voice. And we did get a cool thing with KMDU the other day. When they asked if I wanted to be on their show, I didn't know they meant four thirty in the morning, so that was a lot of fun. We had, we had events, board meetings and Benton City Days finding me, so I went to bed at twelve thirty and woke up at three, so that was, you know. That was a lot of fun, but they came out and I worked with Davis and he said he would love to come out and, and do all of our events. He loves the small town stuff, so. We will be getting out there a lot more.
Thank you for all.
You're on the spot next time. Going to call you randomly.
It's appreciated. There are no special public hearing scheduled that I'm aware of. We have items for, for approval, Resolution two zero two five dash four three. This is for the splash pad cultural survey. Did you want to make any comments on that, Nathan?
If you need to, it's a culture.
Do you guys have any questions on it?
No.
Okay, you have no questions?
I moved to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash four three, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement with Plateau CRM for cultural resource, resource survey services.
Second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, I.
Wadsworth, I.
Stevenson, I. Reed, I.
Alczar, I.
The motion passes. We have a, in your packet, there's a, an agreement for general code services. This was one that was recommended to us. And what they are going to do is go through our city codes, address the conflicts. Bring city codes in compliance with state law. Also bring all the ordinances and that into the city codes. And as we review both of that process, they will have opportunity to review their product. This is probably a year to eighteen months project for them to do this. Dan Hyde was who referred it, referred this company to us. They've done Pasco, they've done a number of other cities, where they've gone through and addressed city codes.
Is there a cost tied to this?
Yeah, twenty-three thousand nine.
That was my question. Is there, is there anything in the budget for this?
We haven't found room in the budget to cover it. And there's an initial, it's a structured payment or down payment was what?
It goes a third, a third and a third. So the first down payment of the third would be due this year and then as they get things done, we would make another third payment. And then when they complete, it would be the remainder.
So the twenty-three, nine hundred and fifty, is that with taxes? And it would be a third of that to start?
I believe so.
There's generally no tax for consultant services.
Okay, just checking.
You know how I don't like to be caught on that one?
Yes.
That's why I asked.
Any discussion?
I don't have anything.
I moved to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash four four, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement with General Code LLC for codification services.
Second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, I.
Wadsworth, I.
Stevenson, no.
Reed, I.
Alczar, I.
Motion passes. Okay, we have a Resolution two oh two five forty-six. You want to discuss that, Nathan, what we're looking to try to do?
Sure. We've got a proposal from J U B Engineering to provide some survey services for Sixth Street. And we've had several discussions regarding that street and some of the concerns, so we've asked them. We've had some folks that live on the east side of the street that have already done some surveys, but on the west side, we don't have any survey data. And the first two parcels seem to be inset. It looks like we've got like a fifty-foot right away there. And then it jumps back down to a forty-foot, so we need to do some surveys just to verify where we're at there. You know, so we can provide some more information to the council regarding future work on Sixth and what we need to do.
So long before my time on this council, J U B was fairly prominent as an engineering firm in this city. And I don't know if they walked away or if they were asked to leave. But we probably need to investigate that a little bit before we engage in a contract with them.
I can say that we have been using them through Akana as, as a sub-consonant. I wasn't aware of any issues with J U B. But we have been using them through Akana as a sub-consonant. They did all the survey work for Lift Station Five for us. They did survey work for the pedestrian crossing project, all the right-of-way verification there. So we have been using them, just not as a consultant through the city directly and no issues or concerns that we've had, so.
I'd take your word for it.
Any further discussion? I moved to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash four six, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with J U B Engineering to conduct a survey on Sixth Street.
I second. All in favor?
Sandretto, I.
Wadsworth, I.
Stevenson, I.
Reed, I.
Alczar, I.
The motion passes. We have a preliminary plat coming back for us before Hilario Zaragoza. Do you want to discuss this?
There, I can jump in for there. I have Zach Prindle, Building Department here at the city. So we're just doing a revisit for the preliminary plat for Hilario Zaragoza. Applicant is requesting the council to consider preliminary plat for the owner to divide one lot totaling eleven point five one acres into thirty-nine new lots.
So we, council appreciate you updating on kind of the procedure where we're at procedurally in this process. So essentially, what, the last time this was before council, council, this obviously goes to Planning Commission, gets a recommendation, comes to council. And you could either adopt that Planning Commission recommendation or you can, you can set up for a closed record hearing, go through the record that was established at the Planning Commission. And then come up with your own findings, or alternatively, you can move to remand back to the Planning Commission to address any inquiries that you may have. So at the last time, this was at the council meeting, that's exactly what happened. It was moved to remand to Planning Commission to investigate two issues specifically, one related to whether housing density and with regard to duplexes versus single-family housing would be a possibility. As well as to determine if park issues were going to be any concerns going forward. So I think where we're at, and so it was, it was moved and then passed by council to go to Planning Commission. I think it was too late to get on the last Planning Commission docket, so I believe the mayor wanted to come back and, and make sure that council still felt that that's the direction they wanted to go. It's not, it can be on for approval this evening, but currently it's, it's on really more as a discussion item to determine whether you want to move forward. Still want to move forward with the Planning Commission addressing those two concerns or, and then we make a motion to rescind the prior motion to remand. Or we take it up this evening. The council didn't take it up this evening, so still obviously in the council's ballpark. But I think that's where, that's what the request is tonight is to check in and see if that's still the council's druthers to be remanded to Planning Commission.
I spoke my piece at the last meeting, so it's up to you guys.
Doesn't seem like we got a lot of choice.
So the, the way it goes at Planning Committee, the way, since the council did last time request that it be remanded to Planning Commission to have those two issues investigated. And when that would be able to get on the docket, we would then do our homework to make sure that we're, we're able to answer their questions. And then they're able to then answer your question so that it comes back to you with, with legal responses to that. We, we haven't done that yet because it hasn't gone to Planning Commission, so. But, so I can't answer those, I can't answer your questions that you're going to be asking of the Planning Commission here this evening, but.
Since, since that remand has not been answered, can we table it for the next meeting?
When's the next meeting? The second?
When, what, the last remand?
Oh, no, no, the next, council meeting is the second?
I believe so.
Okay, okay, and the next Planning Commission meeting is?
After that, it's the following Monday.
Okay, so really, it, it, it just really depends on, at this point, I just want to be clear. At this point procedurally, the council has voted affirmatively to send it back to the Planning Commission and it needs to get docketed. It missed the last docket, we couldn't get it on, but we would be able to this time, so you don't necessarily have to take any more action for it to appear on the Planning Commission docket next time. And, and have those issues addressed by them and then have that information come back to you. That information from the Planning Commission wouldn't be able to get back to you until your second meeting of the month of September. Yes, great. Or you could always do a special meeting, but you could then have that additional information then.
So that would move it to the sixteenth for us?
That's correct.
Any questions? Further discussion? I motion to table this conversation or not the next meeting, but the meeting after on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five?
Send it back to the Planning Commission.
It's already going there.
It's already sent, it just.
And just to clarify, what were the issues we want to go over exactly, Planning Commission wise, just to make sure we're all on the same page? Because they've already done their first review and made all their comments, so to speak.
I think Attorney Ferguson pretty much summed it up. I mean, I pretty well stated last meeting exactly why I wanted to go back.
So do, do we need to make a second to have a discussion? No?
Nope, it's just the only motion on the, is to, is to table this matter to bring it back at your next council meeting.
Till September sixteenth?
Yes.
That way we have the answers.
That works.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, I.
Wadsworth, I.
Stevenson, I.
Reed, I.
Alczar, I.
Motion passes. Okay. We have on page one hundred and thirty-four, your, your packet. Isn't some information is requested from Ed's disposal?
Oh, it's added on the very last of them.
They know we're one thirty-five, screwed up.
And we needed to make a decision on this at some point?
No, it's information that was requested. They wanted to know what the cost of operating the, the station down there was. Since we had that discussion on the other items that's come up is that we're going to have to fence off the container that garbage goes into and it will have to be manned whenever the site is open with the dumping of garbage. The, the city residents have unlimited garbage service. The monthly cost per resident for the drop-off facility down there is part of their bill is two dollars and eighty-nine cents for maintaining that drop box facility. Recycling boxes cost twenty-four cents of each monthly bill to maintain. The, they're willing to pay for the fence to isolate that, so the city doesn't have to do that. That's pursuant to health board requirements, both in the county and the state. They'll play man, if we keep the dump box down there for garbage, they will man it on Fridays and Saturdays only. It'll be open on those days only. The question is, do you want to keep a garbage dump down there? There will also be a higher fee assessed for non-residents outside the city to utilize the facility.
But we'd still have to pay more internally, right?
We'd, we'd have to pay internally. There would be an internal choice for residents to use it.
Okay, well, bring back a formal proposal on it, I guess. So we can look at what, what the numbers lay out at. Because I'm, I'm estimating, because I don't have the exact count, but we probably get about seven hundred residents in the city.
One thousand one hundred forty-six residential customers in Benton City, times that by two dollars and eighty-nine cents per.
Well, that, that's already being charged. We have to add to that almost another two dollars a month to cover the cost and the quick math I just did.
They're paying the two eighty-nine currently in the rate structure.
Right.
The only extra expense they would have is they went down there to, to dump garbage. Rather than, they have unlimited pickup, so they went down to dump garbage, then have an additional fee assessed against disposal.
Right, so instead of dumping for free, there'd be a cost.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, bring back the numbers and a formal proposal and let's.
Yeah, we'll bring back the contract with Ed's, next council meeting, okay? Next item on the agenda, you want to discover the parks naming?
So our park board has been tasked with providing some recommendations for renaming some of the parks that we have. You know, as, as we've discussed, we've got a few parks that really don't have an official name. We call them based on the developments they're in. For example, Mountain View Park over here off of Kendall, Blacktop Park is what we call the park up on the north end of town. And we put together, the park board would like, like to recommend that we put together a survey. It goes out to the public there where they can vote on names for the parks. I provided a copy of a draft survey for council to review. Those are names that the park board, options the park board recommended to bring forth in a public survey. So looking at the parks, we would look at renaming would be first one would be our recreational area and boat launch park, which is the first, first park coming into town where our boat launches. Few options there and they're based off of historical references. Cultural references, different options there. Park number two, we call it Botaca Park because it's in the Botaca development. But also provided names there that have historical reference or cultural reference. Some are geographic references. Also, the park over here where you know, we, it's on Fourteenth Street, so we kind of refer to it as that, but it's also kind of becoming known as the Trail Park or, or the Disc Golf Park because of the things that are being done there. We've got some, some options there. Same with park number four, Mountain View Park, which is the one off of Kendall. And then park number five, Blacktop Estates Park. So I'd like to recommend, like to request your approval to post this as a public survey to the residents of the city. And let them provide some, their input on, on naming these parks.
How, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, how are you planning on getting it out to the citizens?
Two ways, paper copies and online, online survey.
Is there going to be a map with it, just so people that might not know where the parks are, that where they could see?
We can provide that.
Okay.
They're going to have a little snip of a map showing where that park is at. Yes, we can provide that. We have a brief description with each park kind of, it does have the address, but not an actual map, but the brief description has an address. And then just kind of lists a brief description of the park, amenities that are there, things of that nature. But we can add a little snip of a map showing where that's at. And then, like I said, we've got a lot of historical references. We connected with our local historian here in town and got some good ideas from her and also some cultural references, so. I guess it's not officially for approval, but requesting, I guess, council's recommendation to move forward with the survey.
No, I think that's great.
I think we should.
Okay, we will do that. All right. All right, I do want to move on to the new business to the next.
Jason and Tina, did you want to do a presentation for Wasdott or you want Nathan to do the PowerPoint? Okay.
Please hold comments till the end, please.
All right, so this is regarding the downtown parallel parking and bike lane. First of all, I'd like to thank the folks from Washdot being here. Jason and Tina, thank you guys for being here. And I do want to mention and, and just mention that I appreciate Washdot and support they've given the city. They've been, they funded several projects here in town that are in process, our pedestrian crossing project, Riverfront Trail Project. The sidewalk project from, from the elementary school up, up north to the high school and also the roundabout project, so. Appreciate that. And they've also helped us in several safety issues like reducing the speed limit on the north end of town and bringing that down. So appreciate their support there. I'm here because, you know, we, we have been talking to Washdot and requesting options to improve the safety within, within the city. And this is an option that they brought to us. And I'd like to provide just the data and the facts that we've gathered regarding this proposal, so. And I'd like to provide just the data and the facts that we've gathered regarding um this proposal. So. Um the proposal is to change the angled parking in our downtown area to parallel parking. Um and that's between Dale Avenue and Ellen Avenue. So improvements would allow travelers and and this is verbatim from Wash Dot's flyer that they have drafted. But the improvements will allow travelers to enter the street much more easily and improve sight distance and a bike lane will be added in the same area. So the proposed revisions, this kind of is a a crosscut of that. Hopefully you guys can see that, okay? Uh but it's got our current six foot sidewalk, moving to a nine foot parking lane, then a four foot buffer. To a six foot bike lane, another three foot safety buffer, two eleven foot drive drivelanes, then going back across in the same dimensions. Um and this would affect the area from Dale Avenue all the way up to Ellen. So um major revisions here is converting the angled parking to parallel parking. Adding bicycle lanes and safety buffers and then reducing the driveline from twelve foot and I should say width, I'm sorry, reducing driveline width from twelve foot to eleven foot. Um here's some snips of the proposed design. The complete design is in your packet. Uh but just to kind of give you give you some uh reference. Uh from what it looks like. So you've got lane of traffic here, eleven foot lane of traffic, three foot safety buffer, bike lane, which is five foot. Back to a four foot, uh another four foot buffer and then your nine foot width in parallel parking. Um here's another another shot showing where an intersection is. Um we would anticipate the handicap spots would be placed next to the intersections and that would provide ADA access. Up the bulb out ramps here into onto our sidewalk to to local businesses. Um each. Uh the length of each spot would be approximately twenty six foot. So it's there are oversized spaces for the um area we have, but that would allow some of the larger vehicles to park there. So parking, uh this would reduce our downtown street parking by about fifty percent. Cut the uh vertical spaces down.
Any no comments? I'll ask you outside if you can be quiet, okay?
So the parallel spaces. Parallel spaces will be sized for ample access, approximately nine foot by twenty six foot. Um this would provide easier and safer access to downtown businesses. Um but also uh limit parking space and would pro- would more would. Uh make longer walking distances to businesses based on parking. Um I just wanted to show some available s- uh off-street parking that if we do reduce our angled parking here. Uh some off-street parking that's available, so I kind of highlighted them. You've got the parking right over here, which is public parking that would be available for anyone. Um you've got parking available behind businesses, which would be their pri- private parking for those local businesses if they chose to have access behind their buildings. Um can also see some front lots, some side lots. Kind of gives you an idea of off-street parking that is currently available. But again, most of that is private parking for those for those businesses. Um safety, so I think this was the largest reason why why uh Wash Dot gave us this proposal and it is a priority for the city. But it would increase a vision filled of view, uh especially at your intersections. Um we do have issues of backing out in vertical parking right now, entering traffic. Um based on a five-year crash history, there were sixteen accidents total in this corridor and eleven of the sixteen were parking related. And then uh emergency vehicle access, uh better access to buildings and vehicles in an emergency. And then there are anticipated traffic calming measures with adding the safety lanes and all of that. So usually when folks see. Lanes reduced, they will typically go slower uh just out of behavior, so. Um other considerations, uh opening this up would open up for community events like an Ironman or a five K. Right now, we don't have a bike lane through our downtown area. Uh if you're coming in from the north, we have signage that routes the bike lane. Uh over to Seventh Street and down. Uh if you're coming from the south, we have no signage that redirects folks over to Seventh Street. We just. Uh there's no redirection, but there are no available bike lanes currently downtown. So that would provide some community events. Um possible funding opportunities if we were to reclassify our downtown as as a historic downtown. Although I would say that I think that option could be there whether we change our parking or not, that um. And then the project right now is currently fully funded through Wash Dot. So their cycle is July first of this year through June thirtieth of twenty twenty seven. For this project. Um in discussing with them, they currently have this scheduled for late August, uh depending on. On uh cities cities approval. Um and they have a flyer, which I'll show you here, that they would like to hand out if this project uh is approved to move forward. Um other options through construction and discussing with with the folks is possibly looking at this in the spring. And then it would still be fully funded. Um if we choose to delay further than that, um there's. A pretty good chance that we would not get the funding for this project. Um which is something we could again revisit at a later date. And possibly fund through city funds if it was something the city didn't want to proceed with at a later time. Um this is a copy of the flyer that that Wash Dot has put together. Uh that they anticipate handing out just for your reference. And then here are our options. Um option one is to approve the project to proceed a schedule. Uh delay the project for further investigation. I could, I would say that there's kind of an A and B there in delaying the project. Council could choose to delay the project until the spring of next year, where the project is still funded through Wash Dot. Or just choose to delay until uh. Delay for the time being for further investigation. And then the third option is just to deny the project or not approve the project. Um and then we would not move forward. So. Hopefully I've presented all the information. Any questions that council has? Okay.
Go ahead. Trying to think of the wording. And you guys are from Wash Dot, correct?
Correct.
Do you guys mind stepping up to the mic with council? Put you in the hot seat? Okay, so I'm gonna lob out probably the biggest two concerns here. Number one is the lack of bicycles that we have on our roads. And with that, we also have a bike path that extends through half of the town. The second biggest one, and I hope everybody in the room is here for this reason, is the impact that it's gonna have on our small businesses. This is a hard pill to swallow without knowing if Wash Dot's. Got any kind of proposal to help us with that part with that parking. Uh currently, most of the time during the day, we got farmers coming in and out of town, stopping at the hardware store, the market and everything else. This is just something that's, this is gonna cause an economic problem with a lot of the small businesses here in Benton City. My question for Wash Dot is there some investigation we can do prior to this project? That would help us come up with means for public parking near those businesses.
Right, so a short answer is, um we can look into it further, which would be the, you know, delay the project until further investigation. If we want to look into something like that, so.
And that's all I have.
As far as parking, you know, I don't know how often is every spot taken? You know, I mean, I understand like weekends or.
It's ninety five to a hundred percent all day long during the week.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And and then we have events.
Is that when when you um. What we have seen is that in little towns like Benton City, when we decrease the speed. And provide pedestrian facilities, we see increase of business. And uh it brings the community better together. Right now you have that diagonal parking where when you drive by, you could barely see the business. So it really depends on what the city wants to do with the downtown corridor here. Because the diagonal parking is a safety issue as you see in the crash data. Um there's more crash data that involve pedestrians than normal and so. So i- it's just really what um the only, the reason why we. Were we are proposing this project is because the mayor came to us a couple of years ago. And wanted us to look in into uh these safety issues that we have occurring here, so. Um I think that it's wrong to say that the business will be be affected by this. Because if I were to go to a restaurant and I have to park. And I can't find parking um in front of the restaurant, I'd be willing to walk a couple of blocks to get there. I mean, in lot lot of towns that you see that have like um Leavenworth, they remove all their. Parking in front, but yet they're packed all the time. I mean, it's not gonna deter people away from your businesses. I don't think.
So.
Leavenworth has a very different city slightly business.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a, I have a start somewhere, right?
I have a question about the handicap parking. There's only two handicap spaces. I was questioning the handicap parking. There's only one on each side. Are what are the laws as far as that goes? I know with. Apartments, there have to be so many per unit.
Right, so we met with our headquarters and there's basically one per block. So there'll be, there are currently six and there will still be six when we're done.
That's just a slim of the of the plan.
In the four block.
Entire plan shows.
In the four block.
Okay.
Okay, so currently I'm 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 gonna bring this up. Currently, we have three to four parking spots angled per small business. Now, I'm gonna take the hardware store for an example. During the prime of the season, people are in getting parts for irrigation, everything in between. We have people driving up and down this road looking for parking spots. There's nowhere to go in just to get a simple half inch tee for an irrigation pipe. Um that's not including the people that are just going in to get onesies and twosies little parts. Um. Although I I understand there is a safety component in here. I really do believe this is gonna inhibit the businesses and we're gonna have a line of cars. Park somewhere until the parking spot opens up, if it does. Um I'm I'm gonna make kind of a blunt comment and it's that absolutely no offense. I really feel like we're putting a cart before a horse by doing this prior to investigating our parking issue. Ms Alcazar brought also brought up, you know, public events, busy nights, stuff like that. We're we're gonna have people not come to Benton City because of the simple fact that they have to park a mile down the road just to come down to the Benton City Daisy Event or whatever. Um I wanna, I also wanna bring up kind of a rebuttal to the Leavenworth thing. Um I. I could I could see where the comparison of the small town comes up, but we're not young tourists. That will walk two miles just to check out an extravagant fort uh street furniture. We're a community that has, you know, we have handicap needs, we have elderly. Uh we've got a pretty diverse culture here and kind of to compare us to Leavenworth where it's a bunch of tourists is. This this is the side of Benton City that we have and we see, so um. My recommendation for this is I think we look for other alternates before we move to this. I don't think this is a bad idea. I just don't think right now is the best fit for that for Benton City if that's all we're gonna get. Parking is a big issue, so.
I'm not sure if you guys have looked. Is there any way that we can reroute the truckers route? I know that is one of the hindrance.
I feel like this may be like a a step towards that. If you if you wanna make your downtown. Not just a pass through like they use two twenty five to do, you know, whether they're going or coming from Hamford. Or the trucks using it because it's the shortest route. Um if you can make it more of like a place where people wanna, you know, come and stay. And things are a slower pace versus just a pass through, then it might help build on, you know.
I don't think that would deter the truck drivers. I think they're always gonna take the shortest route and that's why we've talked about this previously in um. Conversations that the trucks are are usually our number one issue just for the fact that they hold up traffic. We can't get backed out because there is so many trucks definitely during the season of harvest and things like that and. We were just curious, I know we've talked about it, about trying to reroute the the truck route. And I think that would have a huge impact on the businesses, people wanting to stop if they're not up against the semis trying to get pulled back out.
Yeah. No, and I think, you know, that it's an option down the road if, you know, things go through with moving the truck out, then. You know, that can help, but we just have to be able to make sure the trucks can make those movements. And wherever we put the trucks, people are happy with that also.
Yeah.
Cause not my backyard is a, you know.
A real thing.
Heard that once in a while.
Pretty much hit on my point. I just don't like it because I mean that is fifty percent of the downtown party. That's.
That's a big impact.
It's not like, ah, we lose one or two here or there. I mean, that's.
Well, it's it's hard, you can't, you can only do so much with, you know, you can't make the angle, you know, more severe, so.
But also, I mean, if you can bike up the other roads, if there's lanes. And I live here, I come down here all the time. If they were actually getting used.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, anybody help. Yep, and we are, our downtown is at least currently not for show. It is actually a place where people come.
Business happens.
Do business and not people pay on a park and walk across the road and then wandering through funny hat shops. As delightful as it is. That's my thought about it.
Can I ask, I, is the ru- is the truck route supposed to be Seventh Street, Division Street or Thirteenth? That's the truck route.
Uh so the original truck. Yeah, but citizens came in and wrote a petition and complained about trucks going up Thirteenth Street. Even though that street was designed for some folk of that. And then it's now moved back to the main roads through Benton City. As I understand it, Seventh Street, the compaction is not designed for heavy truck traffic. And would have to have that whole street redone to do that. But. We're as a council always trying to find the best solution to try to improve the the overall quality of life for everybody. Um this opportunity happened to come forward at this time. Doesn't mean we're gonna go forward with it. I appreciate the presentation and I appreciate your efforts. Um obviously, you can see there's a turnout and I can see that there are many business owners here from the downtown. Who are concerned about this and how that's gonna impact their overall business. So in in the long and the short of it, we would like to take truck traffic out of middle town. We'd like to turn downtown into more of a destination location. Right? We've got a great facility at the Palm Tavern right now that is drawing huge numbers. If the city were to contain or participate in events related, say like a jazz night on the street. We can't have the whole street packed. We gotta have space. And we have to have two twenty five not be the primary through the middle of town. Cause if you've ever tried to close the street, and I'm sure you have. Was dot takes a while, right? So we're trying to eliminate those pieces.
Takes a while, like.
I think it was at three, six months to get it closed.
Um they want us to send their stuff in. They want it in at least sixty days before end.
Yeah.
But they worked with us a little bit.
And how long does it take to approve that?
Um with our maps, we send it back and forth um multiple times. And we shut, we shut the road down here for for the July, then it's the day is Halloween, Winter Fest, some community events together.
And you submit the same out every time?
Um we're updating our maps. I've been requested.
So there there's a time lag in that, right?
Yeah.
So and and I I can see the turnout, there's obviously. So and, and I, I can see the turnout. There's obviously a, a big concern with what, what be going down there. And so I, I, I'm gonna have to go with Councilman Reed on this, that it probably needs to be delayed. Until we can figure out some more parking in the downtown and get it structured. Um, and I realize that won't be Wasdott's responsibility. That'll fall on the city to kind of find funds for that.
Yes, ma'am, we'll go to public discussion. Any other questions for Wasdott?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that you've done, trying to make it a safer.
Yes, we do appreciate it.
You've done a lot. While you're leaving. We'll have time for uh, uh, public comment. I'm gonna hold public comments to no more than two minutes. So who would like to make comments? Okay, okay.
Do I get him up there?
Yes.
You have to come up here.
So I personally, I'm.
Please state your name.
Marilyn Gorman, Mid-Tennessee resident. What I wanna say is I'm really excited that this conversation is starting. I think it's cool. Um, asking the question about Seventh Street was a, a big bit of information because I think that's the main thing is for citizens to know. Why we couldn't use a street and why we can use a street. Um, looking at what trucks do when we do close off the road. Might be one, one thing. I don't know if Seventh Street could be turned into a bike lane. I know there's tons and tons of rules and tons and tons of that.
You want to comment? Seventh Street, if we reroute traffic, uh, the width of it. Would require the elimination of parking on one side to do a bike lane there.
Okay, and that's the other piece is the one side, can we have a two-way bike lane? There's so many rules and regu-, you know, things like that. And I feel bad that you said Leavenworth because yeah, we all jumped on you for that. We are not Leavenworth.
That's okay.
You know, but Leavenworth took thirty years to get where they are right now. Um, you know. Getting a continuous bike lane, I think is critical. From here all the way to the cemetery, getting it safe up there, getting more biking paths. Um. But the, I think that we are really working to build up downtown right now. And restaurants have cleaned themselves up. There's other businesses. Uh, senior citizens are not, okay, senior citizens, self-included. I'm not gonna park down by the vet's office. To go into Patnose. Um, not gonna park there and go to eat. Partially because like you were saying, it's, we go in, we're not in there shopping. We're not in Home Depot for, for an hour. We're in Pat, we're in there picking up something and out of there, in and out, in and out. Patnose does have parking in the back, increasing parking in the back in places, talking to those places that do have. Um, parking lots, seeing how the city can, can use some of those. And if we could reduce diagonal parking on one side of the street. That's, and turn this over to college students to come up with a plan, because they come up with some pretty good ones.
You wanted to comment? Okay, state your name and where you live.
My name is Nancy. I live on Twelfth Street. Um, I. Have some concerns about the bike lanes just in that I, coming and going from town, commuting to work to and from and back and forth to my. Visit family and any other errands I need to run in town. I hardly ever see bicycles using these bicycle lanes. It's very rare. Um, it does happen. And once in a while, we get large group of bicycles that come through, like with a race, they have the, you know. Tags on their back with the numbers and all of that. And when that happens. Zero percent of the time do they stay in the bike lanes? They take over the whole road anyway. So I'm not seeing how adding these bicycle lanes is gonna help us as much as we need. Better commute through town to get into um, tri-cities. A lot of us work in tri-cities. And one thing that's a huge issue out here is being able to get from the north side of town to the highway in a reasonable fashion. It gets very congested very quickly and easily. Um, I think adding extra bike lanes and taking away our parking is gonna hurt the businesses. As everybody else has said, um, I don't think I need to beat that horse, that dead horse, but um. I do think it's really important for us to have a good way out of town. I mean, if you think about if. Hopefully, we will never, ever see this happen, but if we ever needed to rapidly evacuate Benton City, for instance, like we're. We're gonna have problems and we keep increasing population in a huge way, which can be really good for town. If we do it with the right infrastructure and with the right plan in place. But that's my thoughts.
Who, someone back here wanted to make a comment. You wanna come up?
Lady in the green shirts had her hand up. The lady in the green shirts had her hand up for a while too.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. My fault.
I'm super quick.
State your name and where you live.
Bill Smoot, live here in Benton City and have a business there on Main Street. Um, super quick. If safety is one of the issues. And, and I don't know everything's being done, but we didn't need to do more to slow traffic down. So when, when I was constructing my kitchen there on Main Street, I was there to one or two in the morning sometimes and. Um, there's nobody else, so I get to watch traffic go by. There's cars that fly down fifty, sixty miles an hour. And uh, during the day, I mean, you can hear them coming long before they even get in front of the kitchen. And so if safety is one of the issues, we need to put that part of the investigation and figure out how to slow the topic. You guys, have you already looked at it? I just wanna say, we should.
We, we've had a lot of discussions on slowing traffic. The problem is, is when we put in slowing traffic measures. Um, it usually deals with a public outcry. Um, such as the roundabout, which is a traffic slowing measure, also an access measure. Um, so we, we run into kind of a double-edged sword there. Either some people are happy or they're not, right?
Yeah, I hear, I hear you. And, and the patrol officers, they, they got a lot on their plate already and, and they're chasing some real crime and. And traffic enforcement is.
Figure this out.
Probably lower on the priority form, but yeah, just my job. It's two cents.
My name is Peggy Brown and I actually live on Ninth Street. Right across from the tire shop. And so what I see, um, and what I've experienced for the eight or nine years that I've lived there is of course an increase in traffic. Increase in truck traffic, increase in the speed of trucks. And increase in children trying to step out. On the crosswalk to see around trucks, to see if they can dash across the road. And I've actually gone out there sometimes and said, no, you know, you, you know, you can't do that. And. You know, you, where I live, I actually see customers and employees of the tire shop. Park on our side of the street, which is perfectly legal. It's their legal right to do so, but they park over there because it's easier for them to get out. To go the direction they wanna go. They're not gonna park in front of the tire shop, cause. Then they have to turn around and get, go on the other way. So um, you know, I think. You know, it's a huge safety issue. I don't have a business in town, so I, and, and I'm retired, so I don't have to worry about my business. But I do worry about people's safety and what I've experienced, I've sat on my front porch many times during rush hour. Watching people try to pull out of their parking spot. And we've all, we've all seen it. We've all been stuck there after you angle parked, try to get out during rush hour. Whether it's either in the morning or the afternoon and get on your way. Um, and so, you know, I would love to see something. Brought together to be able to slow the traffic down. Get rid of the trucks, if that's what you wanna do, and um, take care of this problem.
Thank you, Brittany.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Reed, uh, owner of Here It Is on Ninth Street. And I would, was curious about the safety data that you had. Um, when I inquired, I was led to the Washington State Department of Transportation's uh, crash site. Is that where you got your information from too?
Watch dot, we're like, state patrols, they have the. Access to different databases, but if you request information, then they're looking at database and they read that certain information, so. Crash data is, you know, it's not something that's just gonna be shared with anybody.
Okay, so on what?
People to go through that process for that, for legal reasons that, you know. Shares.
Okay, anyway, when I got on the crash site for the Washington State Department of Transportation. Um, I only went back three years, not five, and I came up with a total of twenty-two. Crashes in the community of Benton City, the proper town, and only three of them, which were last year. Were even close to Ninth Street. So I just wanted to. Throw that out there for when you guys bring this back up again and re-study it. That I had conflicting, but I didn't have, I just had, that's all I had, cause that's where I was led to. So if you have other ways that you can explain to us where these sixteen or accidents were. That were from poor vision, I think that would be great. I also would like to say that. The last two people here that spoke, I have worked on Main Street for twenty years off and on and. The, it, the traffic is too fast. It's not twenty-five miles an hour. And I don't know if you could put up cameras like they do in Seattle or something, or you can take a picture and send out tickets. But I sat out there the other day just watching and, and I don't think half of them are going twenty-five. My son went by and I thought, oh my gosh, how fast is he going? It's, I mean, everybody's guilty of it.
Kathleen, I've been asked in front of your store, going twenty-five miles an hour like I was standing still.
Yeah, if people are right on your rear end, when you go twenty-five miles an hour, yeah.
And that's scary.
It, yeah, and, and it would be easier to back out because we do go out and help our elderly clients, which we have a lot of. We were gonna get a count, but we didn't get to it, how many even come in weekly that are in walkers. Or with canes or even wheelchairs. That there's no way they can park any further away than they are. And if we have one handicap uh, parking spot. On our block, which would be from the restaurant that we'd be going in next to us all the way down to. Uh, Patnose, I assume that would be considered a block one handicap. That's gonna be pretty sad. So anyway, I know you guys are probably on board the same, but I just wanted to. Find out about the incidents for crashes on our main street, they said. And thank you.
Do you want to make a comment?
Yeah.
My name's Mike Gorman and I live on Hazel Avenue. Uh, you mentioned uh, Leavenworth. I'm very familiar with Leavenworth. Sixty years ago became, before it became plasticized. Um. We're a long way from Leavenworth. Um. In regards to routing trucks, I'm familiar with uh, driving double axle vehicles. If you decide to reroute and you're going to be using a circle. Uh, please remember that double axle vehicles pulling trailers. Need a considerable amount of space and distance to get those semis around. Uh, otherwise, uh, we'll just be uh, driving our tires up and over whatever curbing system you use. In regards to the parking uh, situation by going to parallel parking. If it becomes difficult for me to get one item. I'm gonna drive down into Home Depot because I know there's plenty of parking there. So if you remove diagonal parking, you are definitely going to uh. Affect the businesses of the people that live and work here. Um. In regards to, what was the other item? Um. No, I can't remember what it was. In regards to speed and traffic accidents. Uh, like to know what time certain traffic accidents are occurring. Is it after six o'clock, seven o'clock, after two o'clock in the morning? So that's fine. Thank you.
Dan Decker, Benton City. I've lived here for thirty-some years and I've seen some dog and pony shows in my life, but this takes the cake. This is, this is absolutely ludicrous. And. So, I'm, I'm so D O, it's hard, hard to get it together. I wanna know from you two, who initiated this? You or somebody in the city and it was somebody in the city?
Mr. Decker. Mr. Decker. Direct your questions to the mayor and council, please.
All right, fine. I want you, I want somebody from DOT to tell me who initiated this entire situation. Was it DOT?
Dan.
Or was it somebody from the city?
Yes, it came a year ago. We asked him to start working with traffic safety issues. One was lowering a speed limit. See, others crosswalks is taking place. The other's the building of a sidewalk. So all these things are part of addressing safety concerns on traffic in Benton City. This is a suggestion they brought forward, saying this is something you need to look at for traffic safety. That's what it is. That's why we're having the discussion.
Who said that? DOT?
What?
Who said that? DOT? For, for, for the safety. Who, who said this was over a safety issue? Was that DOT or C, or City Council?
The big reason they brought this, if you watched the presentation, is a safety issue.
I find that ludicrous. Think this whole idea is nuts.
Hey, did you, did you wanna make a comment? Okay, then we'll get to Shara.
Uh, hi, my name is Luis. I have a hair salon with my wife on uh, Ninth Street. Right in front of the Minute Mart and next to uh, Pepper Preppers. So uh, we're open Monday through Saturday, and so if we do lose half of our parking, it will affect my business. Um, so Monday through Friday usually is like more or less two, three parking spots that are taken at any given time, including my vehicle. I don't have any side parking or other parking. I can go close enough to park next to my business. Uh, so that'll be a really big inconvenience. And then on Saturday, being the most busiest day, pretty much all the parking spaces are used. Um, and I do have a lot of handicap clientele as well, so that really makes it really good for the fact that they can just park right there and get right onto the sidewalk. And come in on a wheelchair, um, and unload and load back onto their uh, accessible vehicle. And then another theme that I wanna comment on is the loading issues that a lot of my neighboring businesses have. Uh, for example, the Minute Mart uses uh, their suppliers when they drop off their supplies, as well as their um. Fuel trucks, they literally take the whole sidewalk, cause they're not going in there, cause it's so close and tight. And then occasionally, my neighbor Pepper Preppers, I do notice sometimes when I do show up, either before lunch or in the mornings. Their suppliers are also taking quite a bit of parking spots.
They park pretty much in the road.
Yeah, so if we do go to the side parking, it would just make it really worse in general, so I don't think that will help anybody. So it does affect businesses overall. Uh, and that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Thank you. Shara, where do you wanna?
Thanks.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Heather and I'm the pharmacist. As you all know, I have a pharmacy and uh, I serve about between eighty to hundred twenty uh, prescriptions a day. And you can see how many patients comes. And uh, most of my patients are at least fifteen over. And if we give them to go come and park three hundred mile feet away and then walk. Or crawl or what they could handicap or however they wanna come. I don't think I'm gonna be able to, uh, you know, attract them anymore to the pharmacy. Because uh, you know how it is. And second is, uh, these people, uh, especially seniors, when they come and park. Parallel parking is really hard. I'm sure when we took the test, half of us failed parallel parking. Failed parallel parking. It may be easy to get out of the, get back to the road, but it would be hard to park there. Now, if I'm parallel parking and behind me there are cars parked, uh, waiting for me to park. That would be another probably, you know, accident for all the units. Situation. So I don't know how much that will help. Make a decision on it and that's, that's my little input.
Thank you. Go Louis first.
Hello, my name's Mary Peterson and I live on Babs. My main thing is all the different speed signs. I agree, we've got to slow down this town. I am, Babs is like unbelievably fast right now, especially the trucks that are just zooming down. And when I go around the roundabout, I just have seen twenty-five, thirty. I'm so confused. I have no idea. What the actual speed is. Why not have one speed for Benton City? And let that high, let the high school kids know. You know, I really, really think it's too confusing. And if you had just say, this is the speed in Benton City, period. I think it would really be a good idea. I'm also a bike rider and you probably have seen me on my electric bike going all over. There is no way I would ever ride on Main Street anymore. Because of the rocks, because the traffic, it's just not worth it. I love the bike paths. I love going on streets that aren't very crowded. And, um, so I feel like I have a lot in this thing, but those are my two main things. Make the speed one speed in Benton City. I think it would clear up a lot of problems.
Thank you.
I'm Les Patnod. I own the hardware store with my daughters and my wife. The city has been telling us that they're going to build three hundred plus homes in the next few years. So the traffic is going to get worse. The parking is going to get worse. And then they tell us they're going to take away fifty percent of the parking. The, the businesses are going to lose money. The city's going to lose money because if the, the. The businesses lose money, they're not going to get their share either. So like. The other guy said a while ago, this is not a good idea at all. And parallel parking is a worse kind of parking there is. So many people can't do it. And they're going in and out, in and out, trying to get in there. Where angle parking, you just pull in, pull out and be on your way. Thank you.
Anybody want to open a driver's training program in Benton City?
I'm Tracy. Uh, I co-own with Kathleen. And we have been doing hair for about thirty-plus years here. So we do have a lot of senior citizens. And in front of our business, we currently have eighteen parking spots in between Dale and Della. Uh, one of them being handicapped. Hairdresser, but it will take it down to eight. Now, we have, that's for five businesses. Inside our business, we have six business licenses that we do. So. In reality, you're ten businesses for eight parking spots right there. Well, now we're hoping to bring on and still be able to provide services for, we're hoping. Another esthetician, and we've just hired a massage person. So we're hoping to be able to expand and offer those services here in Benton City, so our people remain in Benton City. We don't have a lot for people to walk around and go in little stores and shop. We don't have that on Main Street. You know, our parking on Thursday, eighteen spots. I don't know if you guys got pictures. I've taken pictures on Thursday. I've taken pictures on Friday. I mean, at any point. Um, the Palm is doing an amazing job keeping people coming in there from our town. They do park in front of our shop. At four o'clock, prime rib. They're piling in. Okay, no, no, we love it. Me too. It smells good. You guys should bring us some, but. There, the parking is limited, the overflow. So if they are filling up our spots. Which I would, I mean, I'm going to take the closest spot without handicaps. You don't write it. But our little person stopping by to buy a bottle of shampoo, that supports us. They're not going to stop. They're going to go on the Walmart where they're buying the groceries. They're not sending their husbands in for the hairspray that we have a couple of times a week. That little bit adds up for us. It provides us education, which provides services. We are able to take our girls on trips to get education. But we have to have parking available to us. We cannot have just eight parking spots on that side street to share with. The Palm, the Pat Notes, the new, uh, restaurant going in next door, and some disability point. I know you guys have a hard job and I appreciate what you do and I would not be in your spot for anything and how you're going to fix it. But some community input and I appreciate you guys taking a cent.
I'm Steve Rouse. I don't live in Benton City. I live across the river. Uh, but if if you take somebody and put them in the dental office and they park parallel there. And then you put two or three cars there because they're going to go to the restaurant. You're out of space already. And then if you try to compete with Palm Tavern, which you can do anyway. There's no place to park in Benton City until you get past the Methodist Church. And, you know, and to. I, I, you know, I was pretty elated and I'm all puffed up now because I was compared to Leavenworth.
Okay, as most of you know me, I'm just trying to find the positive and all the negative here. Um, I do agree that this needs to be reevaluated. Um, my office is pretty much across from the dentist's office. And the pharmacy and there are a ton of seniors that are coming in and out that struggle to walk already. Um, I do think that the parking needs to be reevaluated. Um, one of the positives that could come with this is I've been trying to get us recognized as a historic downtown. Um, right now there is too much car traffic versus foot traffic. Uh, one of the benefits that come along with this is the Main Street Tax Incentive Program, which we would be getting like beautification grants for. To help, you know, the paint the buildings that are around here or put in more flowers or put in speakers around the community. Um, definitely taking the parking away from businesses. Currently, myself. The commercial building that's next to me and the gym, when I come in the morning, I don't have parking. I'm one of the lucky ones that has parking behind my building. Um, we share with the Port of Benton and Subway, but there isn't enough parking as we are right now. I don't know what the length is for a regular parallel parking, but twenty-six feet seems a little long. I don't know, maybe I drive a small car. Um, but again, if this is a change that is going to happen, there are some benefits to the community that come along with it. I wouldn't mind to have, you know, speakers like Prosser does. Um, and having more foot traffic, maybe we can get some more businesses coming in. I know a lot of it right now is. You know, the concern of, oh, it's, you know, it's just these main stores or the Palm, which we love. Um, I think reevaluating the whole thing and trying to find other parking around the area, which I don't know where we would go. Um, but there are some positives, so don't be mad at everybody all the time. We need more flowers and trees in town.
Okay, we'll continue on. Is there any miscellaneous council discussion?
No, uh, other than I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. Because this is what we really need as a council and I appreciate WASTUP. Um, because they have a tough job, too. They got enough regulations to kill a small animal. So this is what community is, guys. We, we need you to be pushing this with your friends, your families. Um, we need input. Every one of us is available to you at any time. But what you see is the things that can improve the city, the quality of life, the business, economics. Bend an ear. Make it happen. That's the only thing I have.
I'll add to that. This, one of the most distressing things to do for a council meeting. It's a joy to come here and see a crowd, trust me. And to bring the input and to, and to have discussions. It's depressing to have a council meeting and no one hear from the community. When we're discussing things of incredible importance, it's a real disappointment only to have. People attend when there's a hot button. It's depressing. It's depressing for the input to the council for community involvement. I just want to have my two cents worth and thank you for coming. Kathleen, I hope I shared all the information with you like I shared during the week and a number of other people and, uh. I appreciate everybody's comments, okay? Um, there's no further discussion?
I also, I saw so many of you comment online and went on the post. It was huge. Thank you. Thank you for actually like, like coming, the letters, making your voice heard. So wildly important to the mayor's point. So many times, like, things are being discussed, no one.
Yeah.
And it's like, the input is so valuable. Thank you.
We will delay that.
Right now it's delayed and they're going to work on, you know, they're going to work on, they're going to have staff work on. You know, trying to solve the parking question. That is, that is the million dollar question. There's granted, there's safety issues, there's parking concerns. There's impacts on businesses, small businesses that are struggling. Some of these business owners in here. Uh, I am amazed that they're keeping their doors open right now. I am shocked knowing just the dynamics of thing. And if somebody wants to come and visit with me sometime, one-on-one, I'll tell you the great secret. What the biggest business is in Benton City and it'll blow you away. Attorney's laughing.
I would think, I would think so.
I think the biggest thing, the question that I have, we have so many platforms right now. One person or two or three people hit a Facebook site, hit two Facebook sites and started this spinning. We need to figure out how to learn about agendas.
The agendas are posted every Friday.
On the city webpage.
The city webpage. So go there and look. That's where they're posted.
It took one person to start spinning this. And.
Thanks, Dan.
You know.
None of them's in safety. It's all posted. Everything's posted.
I do want to encourage you guys, though, when you hear rumors, don't just take them at face value. Dig in and find out the truth.
And if you can't be here in person, there's a link.
There are rumors on this in the community are mind bending. Anything else? Any, any motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, Bill has something.
Uh, there's going to be a vacant city council seat, January first.
Yes.
So if you are interested.
Please. What's disappointing is a week, a week ago, there was an open filing for this position extension. And for three days and no one filed for it. No one. No one filed. That's a major disappointment. The other disappointment with that, there were two open positions on the school board. No one filed. Those positions are still open. So get involved in the community.
Can I say something else?
Yeah.
I just wanted to, to give you, uh, the city council and the code enforcement. Uh, some kudos, because like I said, I live across from the tire shop. And a couple of weeks ago, after hours, at seven o'clock in the evening, some people rolled into town. And set up a taco stand illegally, selling food illegally. It took us a long time working together to get them going down the road. But these people sold food illegally with no licenses, nothing until one o'clock in the morning. And I feel like they were selling just tacos. A long time, but we got them down the road.
Are you, are you any motions?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.